What is the sound of a man's dignity being stripped away? It's not a thunderclap. It's the sterile echo of an empty school hallway at midnight. It's the drip of a leaky faucet, counting down the seconds of a man's humiliation. It's the sound of cruel, condescending laughter from men in uniform, who see a black janitor not as a person, but as a target for their boredom and contempt. Tonight, we tell the story of James Washington, a man of quiet honor and the two officers who decided to break him for sport, unaware that their laughter was echoing all the way to the most powerful office in the school district. The fluorescent lights of Northwood High School hummed a low, monotonous tune, a sound that had become the soundtrack to James Washington's life. At sixty-two, James moved with a deliberate, unhurried grace. His gait was a testament to a lifetime of hard work. His hands, though calloused and knotted, were surprisingly gentle as they guided his mop across the linoleum floors. The chemical scent of lemon cleaner was his nightly perfume, a smell he associated not with toil, but with order, with setting things right. Northwood High was more than a job. It was a sanctuary. His own children, now grown with families of their own, had walked these halls. He could still see the ghost of his son Michael hustling to basketball practice, and the echo of his daughter Sarah laughing with her friends by the lockers. His late wife Sable had been a teacher here for twenty years. Every corner of the building held a memory, a whisper of a life well-lived. After Sable passed, and the silence in their small house became a physical weight coming here at night, polishing the floors and erasing the day's chaos, felt like a conversation with her spirit. It was his quiet ministry. He didn't need the money, not really. His younger brother Marcus had been telling him to retire for years. "James, you've done enough," Marcus would say, his voice smooth and persuasive, the same voice that had won him elections and commanded boardrooms. "Come live with us. Enjoy your grandchildren. Let me take care of you." James would just smile. "And what would I do with myself all day? Little brother, watch television. Get soft." He'd flex a bicep still firm from a lifetime of labor. "This keeps my mind right. Keeps me honest." The truth was, James had been taking care of Marcus since they were boys. When their father died, it was James then just a teenager, who had worked two jobs to keep food on the table, to make sure Marcus's sharp mind wasn't wasted. It was James who had beamed with a pride so fierce, it felt like a physical pain when Marcus became the first in their family to graduate from college, then law school, and eventually to become the esteemed, unanimously-elected chairman of the Crestwood County School Board. James's name was Washington, but in the public eye, he was invisible. Marcus was the Washington, and that was just how James liked it. His pride wasn't in public recognition, but in the man his brother had become. Tonight was a Tuesday in late October. A chill was in the air, and the wind rattled the large windows in the main atrium. James had just finished the second-floor classrooms and was working his way down to the cafeteria. He paused by the trophy case, his reflection superimposed over gleaming gold statuettes and faded team photos. He ran a cloth over the glass, erasing a smudge. He saw a man with graying temples and kind eyes, a man content in his quiet corner of the world. That was when he heard the heavy thud of boots on the freshly mopped floor at the far end of the hallway. He wasn't alarmed. The Crestwood County Sheriff's Department had a contract with the school district. A patrol car often did a sweep of the grounds after midnight. Usually it was a quick walk through a nod, and they were gone. But this time was different. The footsteps were slower, more deliberate. There were two of them. They weren't just patrolling, they were prowling. "Well, well, what do we have here?" a voice drawled, dripping with a manufactured authority. James turned slowly, his hands still holding the cleaning cloth. Two deputies stood under the harsh fluorescent glare. The one who spoke was barrel-chested, with a reddish, splotchy face and a smirk that didn't reach his eyes. His name tag read, "Miller." The other was younger, leaner, with a nervous energy about him. His tag read, "Davis." "Just finishing up for the night, officers," James said, his voice calm and even. Miller's eyes roamed over James from his worn but clean work boots to his simple gray uniform. The smirk widened. "Finishing up or casing the joint?" Davis shifted his weight, his eyes darting around the hallway, avoiding James's gaze. James felt a familiar cold knot tighten in his stomach. He had lived in the South his entire life. He knew this tone. It was the sound of a small man trying to feel big. "Sir, I've worked here for fifteen years," James said, keeping his voice respectful but firm. "Principal Thompson knows me. Everyone here knows me." "Oh, we're not everyone." "Old timer," Miller said, taking a step closer. The smell of stale coffee and cigarettes radiated off him. "We're the police, and we see a man in a place he shouldn't be. After hours, we ask questions. See, there's been a string of thefts from schools in the next county. Laptop smartboards. Funny how they always happen at night, when the only person around is the janitor." The accusation hung in the air, thick and ugly. It was baseless, a lazy thread of prejudice woven into a threat. "There haven't been any thefts here, officer," James stated simply. "Not yet," Miller corrected his voice, hardening. "We're here to make sure it stays that way." "Let's see some ID." James slowly reached into his back pocket and pulled out his worn leather wallet. He carefully extracted his driver's license and his official school staff ID card, holding them out. Miller snatched them from his hand. He squinted at the driver's license, then at the staff ID, holding them up to the light, as if they were forgeries. "James Washington. You live over on Elm Street." "Yes, sir." "That's a nice little street. This job pay that well?" The knot in James's stomach tightened. This wasn't about a potential crime. This was a game, a power play. "It pays enough," James said quietly. "Uh-huh." Miller handed the IDs to Davis. "Run him." Davis looked uncomfortable. "Miller, he's the janitor. His ID is right here." Miller's head snapped toward his partner. "Did I ask for your opinion, Davis? Or did I give you an order? Run him." The younger officer flinched, then quickly turned and spoke into his shoulder radio, his voice low and mumbled. James stood in the silence, the hum of the lights suddenly feeling louder, more oppressive. He could feel Miller's eyes on him, a predatory stare that was meant to unsettle to dominate. James refused to give him the satisfaction. He met the officer's gaze, his own expression unreadable, his posture erect. He would not shrink, not here, not in Sable's school. After a moment, the radio on Davis's shoulder crackled to life. "Dispatch to three King Four subject is clear. No wants or warrants." Davis looked relieved. "He's clear, Miller." Miller let out a sigh of theatrical disappointment. He took the IDs back and held them, tapping them against his palm. He didn't hand them back to James. "So you're clear," Miller said, as if surprised. "For now," he gestured down the hall with his head. "What's in the cart?" "Cleaning supplies, sir. Mops, buckets, disinfectant." "You sure about that?" Miller started walking toward the large, yellow janitorial cart. No laptops tucked under a dirty rag, no iPads in the trash bin. He began to rummage through the cart, his movements deliberately rough. He knocked over a bottle of glass cleaner, which clattered to the floor, but didn't break. He kicked at a bucket. He picked up a dirty mop and sniffed it with a look of disgust before tossing it back. "Looks clean," Davis offered his voice pleading. "Can we just go?" Miller ignored him. He turned back to James, a cruel light dancing in his eyes. He had found his evening's entertainment. "You know the problem is respect," he said conversationally, as if they were old friends. "People like you, you don't respect the badge. You think you can just do whatever you want." "I respect the law, officer," James said, his voice dangerously quiet. "Do you?" Miller took another step, closing the distance until he was directly in James's personal space. "Then you'll respect me when I tell you to empty your pockets. Everything. On the floor. Now." This was the line. James had been calm. He had been respectful. But this was a command designed not for safety, but for humiliation. To make him kneel, to make him small. He did not move. "I said..." Miller repeated his voice, dropping to a low growl. "Empty your pockets." The hallway stretched out before them, a long, polished stage for a drama of cruelty and pride. And in the oppressive silence, broken only by the hum of the lights, James Washington made a choice. He would not break. The air in the hallway crackled with a tension so thick it felt like static electricity on the skin. James stood his ground, his gaze locked with Officer Miller's. It was a silent battle of wills, and for a few charged seconds, the only movement was the nervous shifting of Officer Davis, who looked like a man desperately wishing the floor would swallow him whole. "I don't think that's necessary, officer," James said, his voice low, but unwavering. There was no defiance in his tone, only a simple statement of fact. Miller's face already blotchy seemed to darken. The rejection of his authority, however polite, was an offense he couldn't tolerate. A slow, ugly smile spread across his lips. "Oh, you don't do you, you think." He chuckled a harsh grating sound that bounced off the lockers. "That's your problem, see, your thinking. We're here to do the thinking for you. Now I'm not going to ask you again." He raised his hand, gesturing toward James's pockets. The threat was clear. Comply or be compelled. James thought of Sable. He thought of the lessons he'd taught his own son, about carrying himself with pride, about never letting another man diminish his worth. He gave a slow, deliberate shake of his head. "No, sir." The word "quiet" as it was landed like a physical blow. Miller's smile vanished, replaced by a mask of pure fury. "That's it," he spat. "That's resisting. You're obstructing an investigation." "An investigation into what?" James asked, his calm demeanor infuriating Miller even further. "A clean floor, a smudge-free trophy case." "Into you!" Miller roared, his voice echoing unnaturally in the empty building. "Davis, cuff him!" Davis froze, his eyes wide with panic. "Miller, for what?" "We can't, we can't just arrest him. The paperwork. There's no cause." "I'll give you a cause," Miller jabbed a thick finger toward James. "He's being belligerent. He fits the description of a suspect, and he's refusing a lawful order. That's enough for me. Now do your job before I write you up for insubordination." Reluctantly looking physically ill, Davis unhooked his handcuffs. He approached James slowly, his hands trembling slightly. "Sir, please," he whispered, his voice a desperate plea. "Just, just do what he says. It's easier." "Easier isn't always right, son," James said, his eyes still on Miller. As Davis reached for his arm, James didn't resist, but he didn't help either. He stood solid as an oak tree as the cold metal clicked shut around his first wrist. The feel of the steel on his skin was a profound violation. In sixty-two years through hardship and loss, he had never once been in trouble with the law. He had built his life on a foundation of integrity, and in a matter of minutes, this angry, bitter man was dismantling it for sport. "See," Miller gloated, his chest puffed out. "Not so tough now, are you?" He shoved James not hard, but enough to make him stumble back against the lockers with a loud clang. The sound seemed to break a spell. From down the perpendicular hallway, leading to the teachers' lounge, a door opened. "What in God's name is going on out here?" It was Principal Thompson, a man in his late fifties with thinning hair and a perpetual look of harried anxiety. He was holding a briefcase clearly on his way out for the night. Behind him stood a young woman, Miss Albright, a new English teacher with bright, intelligent eyes that were now wide with shock. "Everything's under control, principal," Miller said, his tone dismissive. "Sheriff's Department business. You can go on back inside." Thompson's eyes fell on James, standing with one wrist cuffed, and his face went pale. "James, what is this, officers? That's James Washington. He's our head custodian." "We're aware of who he is," Miller said condescendingly. "We're conducting an investigation." He was being uncooperative. "Uncooperative?" Miss Albright stepped forward, her voice shaking with indignation. "James is the kindest man in this entire school. What could he possibly have done?" Miller turned his glare on her. "Ma'am, I'd advise you to stay out of official police business." But Principal Thompson, for all his usual timidity, found a sliver of courage. This was his school, his employee. "An investigation into what exactly has something been reported stolen?" "Not yet," Miller said, repeating his earlier line with a smug finality. "It's a preventative measure." "A preventative measure?" Thompson sputtered a gasp. "You're cuffing my custodian as a preventative measure. On what grounds?" This was the moment Miller's narrative began to crumble under the weight of actual scrutiny. He had been a king in an empty hallway, his power absolute over one lone man. Now he had an audience, and one of them was in a position of authority. He fell back on procedure and intimidation. "Sir, this man fits the description of a suspect in a series of B and Es." He refused to be searched. For our safety, he's being detained. It's by the book. He looked pointedly at James, unless he wants to start cooperating now. He walked over to James and unlocked the single handcuff, but it wasn't a gesture of peace. It was a strategic retreat meant to make him look reasonable. He then turned his attention back to James's janitorial cart, as if it held the secrets of the universe. He grabbed a half-full trash bag from the attached ring. "Let's just see what we've got in here," he said loudly for the benefit of his audience. He upended the bag. The contents spilled onto the freshly mopped floor with a series of wet, clattering sounds. Used paper towels, a broken pencil, an empty yogurt cup, a half-eaten apple core, and the dregs of a dozen cold coffees from the teachers' lounge trashcans. A dark, sludgy puddle began to spread across the pristine linoleum. "Oops," Miller said, the word oozing with false sincerity. He nudged a wet clump of coffee grounds with the toe of his boot. "Looks like you missed a spot." He and Davis both laughed. It wasn't a real laugh. It was a weapon. It was a sharp, cruel sound, designed to strip away the last of a man's composure. It was a laugh that said, "Look at you. Look at what you are. You are nothing. Your work is nothing. You are garbage just like this." Principal Thompson stood frozen, horrified. Miss Albright had tears in her eyes, her hands clenched into fists at her sides. "But James..." James did not look at the mess. He did not look at the laughing officers. He simply looked down at his own hands, the ones that had worked so hard to create order from chaos, the ones that were now trembling, not with fear, but with a deep, bottomless rage he had spent a lifetime learning to control. He took a slow, deep breath, the scent of stale coffee and his own humiliation filling his lungs. The laughter died down, and Miller, high on his own perceived victory, decided to deliver the final blow. "All right, grandpa. You're free to go, but we've got your name. We'll be watching you." He gestured to the filth on the floor. "Now clean up your mess." James finally raised his head. His eyes were clear, and the quiet dignity had returned, but now it was forged into something harder, something unbreakable. "I will," James said, his voice steady. "But first, I believe I'm allowed a phone call." Miller scoffed. "A phone call?" "You weren't arrested. You're not allowed anything." "I don't think you understand," James said, turning his gaze to Principal Thompson. "I'm not asking for your permission. I am an employee of this school on school grounds. Principal Thompson, is it not my right to contact a representative if I feel I'm being unjustly harassed?" Thompson startled at being addressed, so directly stammered, "Well, yes, James, of course. Of course it is." He saw a lifeline, a way to defer this nightmare to a higher authority. "Who you gonna call?" Miller mocked. "The Janitors Union." James ignored him. He looked directly at the smug, arrogant officer, a man who had tried to take everything from him in this sterile hallway, and he said, "No. I'm going to call the chairman of the school board." Miller and Davis both burst out laughing, again louder this time. The sheer absurdity of it was to them the perfect punchline. "The chairman." Miller wiped a fake tear from his eye. "Oh, that's rich. You think the chairman of the whole damn Crestwood County School Board is going to take a call from a janitor at midnight? What's he gonna do? Come down here and mop the floor for you?" "Undeterred." James pulled out his old flip phone. He didn't have a fancy smartphone like his brother. This one did one thing, and it did it well. He flipped it open. "I think he'll take my call," James set his fingers navigating the simple menu to his short contact list. "Yeah," Miller sneered, crossing his arms. "And why is that?" James found the name he was looking for. He pressed the button, and as the phone began to ring, he looked Officer Miller dead in the eye and delivered the words that would detonate the officer's entire world. "Because," he said calmly, "he's my brother." The laughter caught in Officer Miller's throat, dying with a wet, gurgling sound. For a moment, he just stared, his brain refusing to process the words. The sheer unadulterated confidence with which James had spoken was so at odds with the man he had been tormenting, that it created a cognitive dissonance, a glitch in his worldview. "You're, you're..." Miller stammered, the smirk frozen on his face, a relic of a confidence that had evaporated a second before. "He said he's his brother." Miss Albright snapped her voice, cutting through the tension like a shard of glass. James held the flip phone to his ear, his back straight, his eyes never leaving Miller's. The officer's face was a chaotic ballet of emotions, disbelief warring with a creeping, sickening dread. He glanced at Davis, who looked as if he was about to vomit. The younger officer's face was ashen, his eyes darting between James and Miller, as if watching a lit fuse burn down. The phone rang once, twice. "He's not gonna answer," Miller said, but the words were hollow, a prayer more than a statement. He was trying to will it to be a bluff. It had to be a bluff. The alternative was unthinkable. On the third ring, the call connected. James's voice when he spoke was as calm as if he were asking about the weather. "Marcus, it's James. I'm sorry to call you so late." He paused, listening. Even from a few feet away, they could hear the faint, muffled sound of a voice on the other end, a voice that was sharp, clear, and instantly awake. "No, no. I'm all right," James continued. "Well, not exactly. I'm at the school. Northwood. Yes, that's right. We have a bit of a situation here with a couple of officers from the Sheriff's Department. Miller and Davis, I believe." He glanced at their name tags, locking eyes with Miller again, who flinched as if struck. "Well," James said a world of meaning in the simple word. "They seem to believe I'm here to steal laptops. They've been detaining me. They had me in handcuffs for a moment." Another pause, as the voice on the other end spoke the muffled tone, audibly changing, growing sharper, more intense. "Yes, I'm fine now, but they, they made a bit of a mess." James finally allowed his eyes to drift down to the disgusting sludge of coffee grounds and garbage fouling his clean floor. "They seem to find it amusing." The voice on the other end was no longer muffled. It was a sharp, percussive burst of words, too indistinct to make out. But the fury behind them was unmistakable, a palpable force, even through the tiny speaker. "Yes," James said. "Yes, I think that would be best." "All right. I'll see you in a bit." He closed the flip phone with a definitive snap. The sound echoed in the now deafening silence of the hallway. No one moved. No one breathed. Principal Thompson looked like a statue. Miss Albright held her breath, her eyes wide with a mixture of fear and vindication. Miller was the color of spoiled milk. The swagger, the arrogance, the casual cruelty, it had all been stripped away, leaving behind a terrified, cornered man. The power dynamic in the hallway hadn't just shifted, it had been inverted with the force of a tectonic plate. "That, that wasn't him," Miller whispered, his voice hoarse. "You're lying. You called your cousin or something. You're trying to scare us." "His name is Marcus Washington," James said simply. "He's the chairman of the Crestwood County School Board, and he's on his way." The name Marcus Washington was a lightning bolt. It wasn't an abstract title anymore. It was a name everyone in the county knew, a name associated with power, with influence, with sharp suits and decisive action. A name that was now inextricably linked to the humble, elderly janitor standing before them. Davis took a stumbling step backward, his hand going to his mouth. "Oh, God. Miller. Oh, my God. What did you do?" "Shut up, Davis," Miller hissed his panic now, curdling into frantic damage control. He turned to James, his entire demeanor changing. The sneer was gone, replaced by a grotesque mask of conciliation. "Hey, listen," he began, his voice suddenly syrupy and false. "There's been a misunderstanding here, a big one. We were just doing our job, you know. We get a call about suspicious activity." "There was no call," Davis blurted out, his fear overriding his loyalty. "We were just on patrol, Miller. You started this..." "I told you to shut your mouth!" Miller wheeled on him, his finger jabbing. "You're just as much a part of this as I am." He turned back to James, his hands raised in a gesture of supplication. "Look, Mr. Washington. James, we were just having a bit of fun, a little locker room humor. We didn't mean any disrespect." "You handcuffed me," James stated the words like chips of ice. "You threw garbage on my floor. You laughed at me. It was a mistake." Miller pleaded, his voice cracking. "A lapse in judgment. We're all human, right? We can just forget this ever happened. You don't need to get your brother in..." You don't need to get your brother involved in this. It's beneath him. It's beneath all of us." He gestured frantically at the mess on the floor. "Here, let me... Let me help you clean this up." He actually took a step forward, as if he were about to get on his knees and scoop up the coffee grounds with his bare hands. The sight was so pathetic, so transparent, that it was almost as disgusting as his earlier arrogance. James just looked at him with an expression of profound contempt. "You will not touch my floor." The next ten minutes were the longest of the officers' lives. They stood in the middle of the hallway, trapped. They couldn't leave, because that would be fleeing the scene. They couldn't stay, because Marcus Washington was coming. Every sound, the hum of the lights, the distant rumble of a truck on the highway, their own ragged breathing was amplified. Miller kept trying to speak, to apologize, to bargain, but his words just evaporated in the heavy, judgmental silence. James simply stood, a silent, powerful sentinel guarding the scene of his own humiliation. Then they heard it. The squeal of tires in the parking lot, a car door slamming with definitive force, heavy, expensive shoes striding purposefully across the pavement, then through the main doors of the school, which opened with a soft whoosh. The footsteps were fast angry. They echoed down the hall, growing louder and louder. It was the sound of approaching thunder. A figure appeared at the far end of the corridor, silhouetted for a moment against the glass doors. He was tall, impeccably dressed in a dark suit, even at this hour. He moved with an athlete's grace and a lawyer's purpose as he strode into the light. His face was a mask of cold, controlled fury. It was a face they had only ever seen on campaign posters and on the local news, Marcus Washington, Chairman of the Crestwood County School Board. His eyes, sharp and intelligent, swept the scene in an instant. He saw the terrified officers. He saw the shaken principal and the defiant young teacher. He saw the disgusting mess on the floor. But he didn't look at any of that for more than a second. His gaze landed and stayed on his older brother. He walked directly to James, his expression softening instantly, from ice to a deep, profound concern. He put his hands on James's shoulders, his eyes searching his brother's face. "Are you okay, James?" Marcus asked, his voice low and filled with a raw emotion that no one present had ever heard from him. "Did they hurt you?" "I'm all right, Marcus," James said, putting a hand on his brother's arm. "Just... Tired." Only then, after assuring himself of his brother's well-being, did Marcus Washington turn his attention to the two deputies. He didn't raise his voice. He didn't have to. The sheer glacial fury radiating from him was more terrifying than any shout. He looked at Miller, then at Davis, his eyes boring into them. "You," he said, his voice quiet, precise, and absolutely lethal, "have just made the biggest mistake of your careers." The authority that emanated from Marcus Washington was a physical presence in the hallway. It sucked the air out of the room, replacing it with a heavy, suffocating pressure. Officer Miller, who had built his world on a foundation of intimidation, was now experiencing true professional fear. It wasn't the fear of a physical threat, but the icy, dawning realization that he had crossed a line from which there was no return. His career, his reputation, his future, he could feel it all crumbling to dust under the weight of this man's gaze. "Sir, Chairman Washington," Miller began, his voice a pathetic, wheezing thing. "Sir, I can explain. This is a massive misunderstanding." Marcus held up a single elegant hand. The gesture was small, but it had the finality of a gavel strike. "You will not speak to me," he said, his voice devoid of any emotion, save for a chillingly calm resolve. "You will not explain anything. The time for explanations is over. Right now, your only job is to remain silent." He turned his gaze to Davis, who flinched and seemed to shrink inside his uniform. "Is that understood, Officer Davis?" Davis could only manage a frantic, jerky nod, his eyes wide with terror. "Good." Marcus then looked past them to Principal Thompson, who was still standing by the teacher's lounge, looking utterly lost. "Mr. Thompson," Marcus's tone softened almost imperceptibly, but the steel was still there. "Were you a witness to this entire event?" Thompson swallowed hard. "Most of it, Chairman. Ms. Albright and I came out when we heard shouting." "And what did you see?" "I saw... I saw Officer Miller shouting at James, and then... And then he emptied the trash onto the floor." Thompson's voice grew stronger, a spark of his own outrage finally igniting. "It was unprofessional. It was bullying. There was no cause for any of it." Marcus nodded slowly, absorbing the information. He looked at Ms. Albright. "And you miss..." "It's Albright, sir. Sarah Albright." She said, her voice shaking but clear. "I saw the same. They were treating him horribly. They were laughing at him. It was... Inhumane." Marcus's jaw tightened, a flicker of the raw fury visible beneath the controlled surface. He turned back to the officers. "Your sheriff is a man named Frank Garrison, is he not?" "Yes, sir," Davis squeaked out, before Miller could silence him. Marcus pulled out his phone, a sleek, modern smartphone that was the polar opposite of his brother's. With a few swift taps, he placed a call. It was answered on the first ring. "Frank Marcus Washington. I apologize for the late hour. But I'm afraid we have a serious problem." Marcus's voice was all business now. It was the voice of a man accustomed to wielding power, a man who did not waste words. "I am standing in the main hallway of Northwood High School. With me are my brother James Washington, who I believe you know has been the custodian here for over a decade. Also with me are two of your deputies, Miller and Davis. Yes, that's right. It appears they were under the impression that my brother, a sixty-two-year-old man with an impeccable service record, was a burglary suspect. In the course of their investigation, they have harassed him illegally, detained him, and deliberately created a demeaning and hostile environment for him in his own workplace." He paused, listening. "No, Frank. He is not under arrest. He is, however, deeply insulted, and frankly, so am I. No. I don't want you to have a word with them. I want you to send a superior officer, a sergeant or a lieutenant, to this location immediately to take their statements. I want them relieved of their patrol duties for the night. And I want you in my office at eight AM sharp to discuss the future of the Crestwood County Sheriff's Department's contract with this school district." The final sentence hung in the air like a guillotine. The contract. It was worth millions of dollars a year. It was jobs. It was political capital. It was everything. Miller looked as if he had been physically struck. This wasn't about a reprimand anymore. This was about the potential for a catastrophic, department-wide fallout, and he was at the very center of it. "Yes, Frank. I am perfectly serious," Marcus continued. "I will expect a supervising officer here within fifteen minutes. Thank you." He ended the call and slid the phone back into his pocket. The entire exchange had taken less than ninety seconds. In that time, he had surgically and efficiently dismantled the officer's authority and set in motion a formal process of consequences. He then did something that solidified the new reality in the hallway. He turned his back on the officers completely, as if they were no longer relevant, as if they were pieces of furniture. He walked back to his brother. "Let's go home, James," he said softly. James looked at the mess on the floor. His brow furrowed with the ingrained habit of his duty. "My cart. The floor." "Don't," Marcus said, his voice firm but gentle. "Don't you dare touch that. Someone else will handle it." He looked at Principal Thompson. "Mr. Thompson, can you ensure the rest of Mr. Washington's duties are covered for the night, and that this... Scene is documented and cleaned by someone else?" "Absolutely, Chairman. Right away," Thompson said, galvanized into action. "I'll call the service we use for emergencies, and I'll take photos of it myself right now. Thank you." Marcus put a protective arm around James's shoulders. "Come on, big brother. Let's get you out of here." As he guided James down the hallway, away from the scene, they passed Ms. Albright. Marcus paused for a moment. "Ms. Albright," he said, his voice holding a tone of genuine gratitude. "Thank you for speaking up. It takes courage to do that." "He's a good man, Mr. Washington," she said, her eyes welling up again. "He didn't deserve any of this." "No," Marcus agreed, his voice hardening as he glanced back at the two deputies standing in silent, pathetic tableau under the humming lights. He did not. Miller watched them walk away, the powerful school board chairman, with his arm around the shoulders of the janitor he had just tried to break. He saw the bond, the love, the shared history, that he had been too blind and arrogant to even conceive of. He had seen a uniform and a skin color, and had built a whole story around it, a story of inferiority and suspicion. He had never imagined the man had his own story, his own connections, his own power. The reality of his miscalculation began to set in cold and sharp. He hadn't just bullied a janitor. He had insulted the family of one of the most respected men in the county. He had threatened the livelihood of every deputy on his force. He had started a war he could not possibly win. The squeal of another set of tires in the parking lot announced the arrival of his superior officer. The reckoning had begun. Miller felt a tremor of pure panic run through him. His mind raced, trying to formulate a version of events that could possibly save him. But as he looked at the coffee grounds and filth spread across the floor, a perfect, ugly monument to his own hubris, he knew deep in his gut that there was no explanation that could wash this stain away. The karma that visited Officer Miller was not a sudden, dramatic bolt from the blue. It was a slow, grinding erosion, a geological process of consequence that wore a mountain of arrogance down to dust. It began the moment Sergeant Riley's patrol car pulled into the Northwood High parking lot. Riley was a twenty-year veteran with a face like a roadmap of disappointments and a deep, abiding hatred for messes made by younger, stupider cops. He took in the scene with one sweeping, tired gaze, the two deputies standing like guilty schoolboys, the agitated principal snapping photos of the filth on the floor with his phone, and the monument to Miller's hubris, a disgusting smear of coffee grounds and trash on the otherwise immaculate linoleum. Riley didn't need a detective's shield to read this scene, it stank of abuse of authority. "Classroom 101," he barked at Miller, pointing. "Classroom 103," he said to a pale and trembling Davis. "You don't talk to each other. You don't text each other. You talk to me. Now." In the sterile quiet of classroom 103, surrounded by posters of chemical elements, Davis crumbled. The words tumbled out of him in a torrent of fear and regret. He recounted how Miller had instigated the stop without cause, his voice cracking as he described the sneering questions, the rummaging through the cart, the order to cuff James. "He just kept pushing," Davis whispered, wiping at his eyes with the back of his hand. "I told him to let it go, but he wouldn't listen. He was having fun." In classroom 101, Miller tried a different tactic. He blustered. He posture. He wrapped himself in the tattered flag of procedure. Subject was acting suspiciously refused a lawful order to be searched. He recited his voice a little too loud. "I was concerned for officer's safety. It was all by the book Sergeant. The trash. That was an accident. It slipped." Sergeant Riley just stared at him, his expression flat. "It slipped. The whole bag just up and flew out of your hands and landed right at his feet. Is that the story you want me to put in my report, Miller?" Miller's bravado faltered. "We were just trying to clear the scene." Riley leaned forward, his voice dropping to a low, dangerous growl. "You weren't clearing a scene, you were making one. You humiliated a man for sport. And you did it in a school full of cameras in front of witnesses, and you colossal idiot! You did it to the brother of the man who signs the checks for the multimillion-dollar contract that pays our salaries. Your fun is about to cost this entire department." By three AM, both deputies had been relieved of their duties, their badges and firearms secured in an evidence bag. They were driven home in silence, the administrative leave feeling less like a temporary measure and more like the beginning of the end. The next morning, Sheriff Frank Garrison, a man whose political ambitions were always more polished than his badge walked into Marcus Washington's office. He was a portrait of practiced contrition. He offered profuse apologies, promised sweeping reforms, and spoke of rigorous retraining on community sensitivity. Marcus let him talk. He sat behind his large mahogany desk, a fortress of calm fury. Beside him, in a simple but dignified suit, sat James. Not as a prop, but as a silent, powerful partner in this judgment. When Garrison finally wound down, Marcus leaned forward. "Frank," he began, his voice slicing through the sheriff's bladder. "Spare me the talking points. This isn't about a bad night or a couple of bad apples. It's about the poison in the roots of the tree. Your officer looked at my brother, a man who has worked with his hands his entire life, who raised me after our father died, who has more honor in one of his calluses than that deputy has in his entire body. And he saw nothing but a caricature to be toyed with." Marcus stood up, walking to the window that overlooked the city. "The real question isn't about what happened to James Washington. The real question, Frank, is what happens to the man who doesn't have a brother, who can get you on the phone at midnight? What happens to the person who has no one to call, who just has to stand there and take it, whose humiliation is never brought into the light? What do you do for them?" The sheriff, for the first time, had no glib answer. "The school's security contract is now under review," Marcus stated, turning back from the window. "The board meets in two weeks. I am officially recommending we terminate our agreement and put the contract out for open bid, unless..." He paused, letting the silence stretch. "You can provide an immediate, definitive, and public excision of this rot from your department." The threat lit a fire under the sheriff's department. The Internal Affairs investigation proceeded with the speed of a bullet train. But Marcus knew that bureaucratic justice was often a quiet affair. He wanted a reckoning that echoed. Two days later, The Crestwood Chronicle hit the newsstands. The headline in bold, black letters above the fold screamed, "Janitor Harassed, Dignity Trashed, Sheriff's Dipped Scandal Puts Millions on the Line." Principal Thompson's cellphone photo of the mess on the floor was printed in stark color, a brutal, ugly centerpiece. The story was a meticulous account of the night's events, quoting- quoting a source with direct knowledge and a heartbroken educator. It painted a vivid portrait of James, his long service, his late wife, his quiet dignity, and contrasted it with the sneering cruelty of the officers. The city erupted. Talk radio was flooded with calls, the hashtag #IStandWith. James became the number-one trend in the state. People who had been students at Northwood twenty years ago called in to share stories of Mr. Washington's kindness. The sheriff's office was buried under an avalanche of furious emails. The school board meeting was a civic event. The auditorium was packed with an overflow crowd watching on monitors in the lobby. Marcus recused himself from the vote, but delivered an opening statement that set the tone for the evening. "This is not about family," he said, his voice resonating with controlled passion. "It is about the fundamental principles of respect and trust. The individuals we empower to protect our children must be guardians, not predators." The events at Northwood High were a profound betrayal of that trust. The question before this board is not simply one of contract renewal. It is a question of our community's character. One by one, citizens came to the microphone. Ms. Albright, no longer shaking, spoke with the clarity of a seasoned orator, her firsthand account painting a devastating picture of the officer's behavior. Principal Thompson, his voice firm with newfound courage, spoke of a sacred trust that was not just broken but gleefully stomped into the ground. The final verdict from Internal Affairs was swift and brutal. Miller was terminated for gross misconduct, abuse of authority, and making false statements. Davis, whose tearful cooperation had been key, received a one-year suspension and permanent reassignment to the evidence locker, a professional purgatory from which he would likely never escape. Miller, fueled by a rage that blinded him to his own indefensible position, hired a union lawyer and appealed. He lost. He appealed again. He lost again. His life fell apart in stages. First, the job, then the respect of his peers, then his marriage. Blacklisted by every law enforcement agency in the region, he drifted through a series of menial jobs until a year after that fateful night, he found himself on his hands and knees scrubbing the floor of a downtown corporate law firm. He was a night cleaner, a ghost in an empty building. One night, while emptying a trash can, he saw his own haggard reflection in the polished, black marble of the lobby wall. He saw a hollowed-out man haunted by the ghost of the janitor he had tried to break, and in the crushing silence of the empty building, he finally understood the totality of his ruin. James, meanwhile, had been restored. He refused to retire. The first night he returned to Northwood, a brand-new, top-of-the-line janitorial cart was waiting for him, a gift from the PTA. Taped to the gleaming chrome handle was a card thick with signatures. "Mr. Washington," it read, "thank you for keeping our school and our standards clean." The respect he was shown was different now. It was active, not passive. Students who used to walk by without a glance now made a point to say hello. Teachers stopped to ask how he was doing. He was no longer part of the scenery. He was seen. Months later, Marcus found him in his usual spot, polishing the glass of the trophy case until it shone. "They denied his final appeal," Marcus said quietly. "It's officially over." James paused, his hand holding the cleaning cloth. He nodded slowly. "Good." "Are you sure you don't want to stop, James?" Marcus asked, the old, familiar question. "You've earned your rest. You don't have to do this." James turned from the trophy case and looked at his younger brother. He saw the pride in Marcus's eyes, and Marcus saw the unshakable peace in his. He smiled a genuine, easy smile that reached his kind eyes. "I know I don't have to," he said, his voice full of a quiet strength that had outlasted the laughter and the insults. "But I want to. This is my place, and a man has to take pride in his place." He turned back to the glass, his cloth moving in slow, deliberate circles, erasing the last of the smudges. He was a silent guardian in the quiet halls, a living testament to the fact that true power is never found in a badge or a title, but in the profound, unyielding dignity of a good man's character. The story of James Washington is a powerful reminder that dignity is not something that can be given or taken away by others. It is something we hold within ourselves. His quiet strength in the face of loud, arrogant cruelty and the ultimate grinding power of karma shows us that the universe eventually balances its books. Arrogance may have its moment, but integrity has a lifetime. If this story of justice and quiet honor resonated with you, please take a moment to hit that Like button. It truly helps our channel grow. Share this video with someone who needs to hear a story of hope and resilience. And most importantly, if you want more dramatic stories that explore the deepest corners of human nature and the satisfying turn of karma, make sure you subscribe and ring that notification bell. Thank you for listening and for valuing the power of a story well told.